P M, Thursday, January twenty second, twenty twenty three. I call this regular session of the Brockton Housing Authority to order. The notice has been posted at City Hall and online. Coffees are available. This is a public meeting. Please note, all Brockton Housing Authority meetings are recorded. Meetings are recorded. Chairman Timothy J. Sullivan, Vice Chairman Ernest Pettifat. Member Janet R. Trask, Treasurer Cal Roberts. Get into a roll call.
Commissioner Pettifat?
Here, here.
Commissioner Trask?
Here.
Commissioner Roberts?
Here.
And Mr. Chairman?
Here, we have a call. This is Governor Baker's COVID nineteen memo. I'll just read it off. Due to the ongoing COVID nineteen pandemic, it's state of emergency. On March twelfth, twenty twenty, Governor Baker issued an executive order temporarily suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. General Law is Chapter thirty eight, Section twenty. Pursuant to the order, public parties are temporarily relieved from its open meeting laws requirements that meetings be held in public places, open and physically accessible to the public, so long as measures are taken to ensure public access to the body's deliberations through adequate and alternative means. That memo was extended to April first, twenty twenty one, extended again to July first, twenty twenty two, extended again to July fifteenth, twenty twenty two, and extended again for March thirty first, twenty twenty three. You are hereby given notice that the members of the Brockton Housing Authority are called to meet in a regular session on Thursday, January twenty second, twenty twenty three, at two P M. And the mayor Bill Calvert, Executive Boardroom, Manning Towers, forty five Garden Road, first floor, Brockton Mass, oh two three zero one. This meeting slash hearing of the Brockton Housing Authority will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and our participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting slash hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt broadcast, unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in any specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. The public is invited to view and or listen to the meeting via phone, computer, laptop, or tablet. To do so, download the Zoom Cloud Meeting app in any app store or at W W W dot zoom dot U S. At two o'clock on January twenty sixth, twenty twenty three, click on Join the Meeting and enter I D number eight nine one five seven five four two eight six five, passcode six seven six nine two one, or use the link H T T P double dot double slash zoom dot U S slash I slash eight nine one five seven five four two eight six five. You may also join by calling the conference line at one six four six five five eight eight six five six at two o'clock on January twenty sixth, twenty twenty three, and enter the meeting I D eight nine one five seven five four two eight six five, passcode six seven six nine two one, followed by the pound sign. The board chair will instruct participants on appropriate time and manner of public comment during this meeting. We can all rise, but please believe them, and remove your hats. I pledge allegiance to the law. Roll call.
Commissioner Pettifat?
Here.
Commissioner Trask?
Here.
Commissioner Roberts?
Here.
And Mr. Chairman?
Here.
Item two, approval of the minutes of the special meeting of December fifteenth, twenty twenty two, item A in your packet.
I have had the opportunity to review the minutes. I have found them to be in order, and I would recommend that they be approved as written.
We need a motion and a second from anybody?
So moved.
The center.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Janet Trask, seconded by Commissioner Ernest Pettifat. Motion is to approve the minutes of the special meeting of December fifteenth, twenty twenty two, as written. A roll call, Mr. Tebow. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Roll call, Mr. Tebow.
Commissioner Pettifat? Yes. Commissioner Trask?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Item three, hearing of visitors. Any member of the public is invited to speak before the board. Visitors wishing to be heard must sign in with name, address, and contact number before the start of the meeting. Each visitor will be allowed three minutes to speak on each subject. The board will take any issues under advisement and respond at a later date. Total time for hearing of visitors will be limited to fifteen minutes, which will be strictly enforced. There will be no passing your three minute minutes to another member. All visitors can be heard on agenda items only. Do we have any hearing of visitors?
Nobody has signed in, Mr. Chairman, and the I see from the Zoom that we only have, we have two employees. So note, there are no visitors.
Is it a million of employees?
Yes, yep.
A hearing does, there is no hearing of visitors. Item four, correspondence. Mr. Tebow?
Uh, members of the board, you have three um cars, pieces of correspondence here. The first one is a letter from the H C D to the chairman um awarding the housing authority a resident service coordinator funding. And the the nice part about this is every year this would come up and it would be cut from the budget, and then there would be lobbying to get it back in. Um, this is a five-year guarantee that will continue as long as there's money, uh but that's anticipated. So that's very good. Um, the second letter, again, is for the chairman notifying the housing authority that in two thousand and twenty six, they're obligating five hundred ninety one thousand and sixty eight dollars to the Brockton Housing Authority for capital improvements. Now, that number is just slightly old when you look except today. And by the time we get to uh two thousand twenty six, it will change substantially, hopefully up. Um, but it's just telling you they are committing money to us in in out years. And then the third piece of correspondence is a letter to Chief of Police Brenda Perez uh regarding our community policing uh program. And if you have that, you can see what our arguments are about the strength of the program. I did meet with the chief and with the mayor on this item. They both committed to maintaining and filling the second vacant position as soon as they get the staffing. Um, they are getting a number of new recruits. They're actually bringing in officers from other uh departments. They have seventeen who have expressed interest. Um, and one thing about Chief Perez, uh she grew up in Crescent Court. So she is a a local um person and running the police department.
I will, the mother of thirty years. He was a full bus driver.
Full bus driver, yeah.
Nice, nice people. Did they say when it's gonna happen or?
Unspecified, unspecified date in the future, uh dependent upon staffing. And I know um talking to uh the mayor and the chief, they're a little bit frustrated with, you know, bringing two on and having to retire, bringing one on, have one go out on um workers' compensation, that type of thing. So as as we all are struggling to staff up.
We put it up in twenty twenty six?
No, they didn't. Well, we did get a letter for twenty twenty five, twenty four, twenty three, so it's it's, I see what you're saying, but we we do have money next year, too.
Item five, approval of the bill for the regular meeting of January twenty second, twenty twenty three. Commissioner Roberts?
Okay, I reviewed the bills with Tom. Um, there were three things and questions that were resolved. They sent me an email on what they were, so I make a motion to accept the bills for twenty twenty three.
Need a second?
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Cal Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Janet Trask. Motion is to approve the bill for the regular meeting of January twenty sixth, twenty twenty three, as presented. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Gary Dunn, roll call.
Commissioner Pettifat?
Yes.
Commissioner Trask?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Item six, approval of Amendment number seventeen to Contract for Financial Assistance, C F A five thousand one, Exhibit C in your package.
So in the correspondence you saw in two thousand twenty six, we're going to get um approximately five hundred ninety one thousand sixty eight dollars. In two thousand twenty three, we're getting five hundred eighty nine thousand nine hundred fifty four dollars. Um, and the board has to vote to accept that money. Uh, so this is simply the capital money, and they would like, um, and I strongly recommend the board accept the money. We could use that and a couple million more.
Yeah.
Is this what I'm? When I leave, we'll do the same thing, okay?
Exactly. You'll do the uh the doc you signed to, to sign that form. And Susan's going to get a signature from you today on another form.
Okay. We need a motion and a second, item six, from anybody?
So moved. Second.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Cal Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Janet Trask. Motion is to approve the following resolution. Resolution authorizes the contract for financial assistance for stated capital improvement plan five thousand one, Amendment number seventeen for stated housing development. Now therefore, by it by it hereby resolved by the members of the Brockton Housing Authority as follows. Section one, the authority shall enter into a contract with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in the form submitted at this meeting in contact in the name of the Brockton Housing Authority under its corporate snail, and the secretary is hereby authorized to attest the thing. Section two, the authority hereby requests the Director of the Department of Housing and Community Development entered into such a contract with the authority in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to approve such contracts. Section three, the offices of the authority shall be, and they are hereby authorized and directed on and after the execution of such contracts by the respective party, thereto thereto to do and perform on behalf of the authority all acts and the things required of the authority to perform fully, all of its obligations thereunder. Section four, this resolution shall take effect immediately. Any questions or discussion on that motion? Gary Dunn, roll call, Mr. Tebow?
Commissioner Pettifat?
Yes.
Commissioner Trask?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Item seven, approval of contract extension on call plumbing, Exhibit C in your package.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would like um Mr. Padula via Zoom to make the presentation on this item, please.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Oh, thank you.
I'm 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 on Zoom. Um, good afternoon, everyone. I have two requests for the uh contract extension for plumbing services. The first is with Anania Plumbing Company. Uh, the contract, the current contract with Anania expires April seventh in just a couple of months. The company has been with us for the past three years, and it is highly regarded here uh at B H A. Uh, the company has indicated that they're willing to extend the contract for another two years by maintaining the same terms and conditions that were put in place in two thousand and twenty. Uh, the uh company knows knows the facilities very well, knows the people very well. It is uh continuing on with them would mean essentially hitting the ground running in terms of uh plumbing services. There will not be any need for training, for orientation. And the um maintaining the contract, extending the contract for another three years has a great financial impact, positive impact for us. And therefore, I do recommend to you approve an extension for two more years with Anania. The second is the same request for the approval of the of a contract extension for plumbing for Robert Irvine and Sons. Their contract uh with us expires April twenty first. This is also a company that uh indicated via email that they're willing to maintain terms and conditions the same as in two thousand and twenty. Their contract expires on the twenty first of April. Uh, this is also a company that is well-known to us. They have been working with us for quite a while. Maintenance uh indicates that uh it is an excellent company to work with. Therefore, I um I would also request that you approve an extension for two more years with this company.
Just one question, Mr. Padula. It's the three point five raise, is that each year for the two years?
Uh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you well, Commissioner.
The the raise of three point five percent, is that each year or only one year?
So in your memo, Joe, you reached for the median projection for core inflation.
Oh, for for it would be every year, three point five percent every year. They're savings to us. There's no increase. The price stays the same as in two thousand and twenty.
Oh, I see. Okay, thank you.
For both companies, by the way.
Okay, we need a motion?
A motion. Motion, they stopped the uh two contracts, the extension, the extra two years.
One at a time.
Okay.
Just the one at a time. Don't you? I got you on the Robert Irving. Plumber? Robert Irving Plumber, okay?
Okay, Robert Irving Plumber?
Yep.
Like they extended for extra two years.
Okay. I need a second?
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Ernest Pettifat, seconded by Commissioner Janet Trask. Motion is to extend the contract for on-call plumbing services with Robert Irving and Sons Incorporated for two years, beginning April twenty first, twenty twenty three, and ending April twentieth, twenty twenty five, for the same terms and conditions of the twenty, April twenty first, twenty twenty contract. Any questions or discussions on the motion? Gary Dunn, roll call, Mr. Tebow?
Commissioner Pettifat?
Yes.
Commissioner Trask?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Item two, which is seven A in your packets, you need a motion and a second?
So moved.
Anania Plumbing?
I get it.
And a second?
Question?
A motion has been made by Commissioner Janet Trask, seconded by Commissioner Ernest Pettifat. Motion is to extend the contract for on-call plumbing services with Anania Plumbing and Heating Incorporated for two years, beginning April twenty first, twenty twenty three, and ending April twentieth, twenty twenty five, for the same terms and conditions of the April twenty first, twenty twenty contract. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Gary Dunn, roll call, Mr. Tebow?
Commissioner Pettifat?
Yes.
Commissioner Trask?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes, motion carries unanimously. Approval of fiscal year twenty twenty three state and federal operating budget, Exhibit E in your packets.
I will be doing a um, the way we will move through this exhibit, there are actually nine motions that we'll have to do. Uh, there are nine different budgets that need to be approved. The exhibit that you have has eleven budgets on them, but two of them don't have to be approved. I'll explain that. Um, so I'll go through, I'll do again a brief presentation, I'll answer any questions, and then if we could move through the um budget, the the motions and the acceptances.
Each one separately?
Each one separately, yeah. All all nine of them. If you remember, every year, it's it's quite the, and in your throat, sounds like it's a little dry, so you might want some water. Um, but I'm going to uh share my screen, so we're all looking at the um the same thing. Uh, let's see. So this is the exhibit that you have in your packet. And it's actually, it's the first two pages of the exhibit. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Let me just make that small so everybody can hear. Um, so I'll go across the top. Um, there are, as you can see, I've numbered them, eleven different budgets here, starting with the central office cost center and going all the way through to local affordable housing, which is our affordable housing programs. Up here, just below the blue and above the green is the income that we get for every program. So you can see the central office cost center does not get any um rent at all. It gets money from HUD management fees that we charge to the other programs. Over here, AMP one, which is Fitzhill Street, Crescent Court, Roosevelt Heights, we do get um rent. In fact, we're budgeting about two point five million dollars to be paid to us and rent from our residence and family housing. We are budgeting about five point three, almost five point four million dollars for the elderly uh to be paying that. And the state program, one point five, and then so on and so forth in the smaller programs. The section eight program doesn't get rent. We make uh money there on administrative fees, and we're estimating that we'll get about two million five hundred eighty two thousand dollars in administrative fees to run that program. They all tally up, and as you can see, right across a highlighting in green, the incomes that we get. If you total it up, this total really doesn't mean anything, because you can make a ton of money on one program and lose money on another program, and you have to pay attention to each one. But we expect about twenty nine million dollars in income to the housing authority. About another thirty six million dollars will come in to pay landlords. So our total, the total cash coming through the housing authority is somewhere between sixty and seventy million dollars uh expected in two thousand and twenty three. Um, if we go down, if we can go down, let's see if I can figure out how to do that. Let's see. Oh, there we go. Um, so now we get into expenses, and um the first top thing we look at is the administrative expenses, the administrative salaries, legal um travel and regulated expense, audit fees, accounting fees, administrative other, and it totals it up. And you can see those are all in forty one hundred categories. This is how the budget's broken down. Um, you tenant organizations, some have ten uh money that we spend out. Most of it is uh for AMP two, the federal, the federal uh gives money for the residents. The state really doesn't. Um, contract costs that go to the residents also. Um, maintenance, maintenance is way, way, way up. Um, contract costs are way up. Um, materials way up. Uh, you've you've heard about inflation? Well, part of the real driver in inflation is is what we're paying for construction and contracts. Um, what it costs to paint a unit now is much higher than what it was a short time ago. Um, Chris's department is seeing astronomical, sixty six percent increase according to D H C D in the cost of building things. Um, so cost are way up in that area. Luckily, our funding agencies have increased our, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a moment, they've increased our subsidies a bit. Um, protective services, we do spend quite a bit on protective services. Um, we spend, well, you can see eight hundred thirty three thousand dollars on it overall. Um, most of it is going to the um security company that goes into the high rises and is there during the sixty five days a year. Uh, general expenses, you have insurance, uh and insurance is up. Every time there's a hurricane in Florida, our insurance goes up. And we seriously, when the wildfires in California, our insurance goes up. It's a pool all across the country. Um, pilot, we pay very little bit pilot, that's uh payment in lieu of taxes to the city, fifteen thousand dollars. Employee benefits are up. Um, interest and principal payments are not up, they're down, because we've we've got fixed loans and the interest rates are the same, so our interest rates aren't going up, and we're paying down, so they're actually going down a little bit there. Um, HUD man- HUD management fees, that's just a, an expense that the uh AMP one and AMP two have to pay to the C O C C. That's just a transfer from one area in the housing authority to another. Um, then we have utilities. Anybody know what happened to the utilities?
I wish I did know.
Yeah, uh, Joe is on behind here, you can't see him, he is working on uh going out to buy electric again. Um, but it won't be at the same price we're paying now, it'll be higher. Yeah, um, so that that's uh, the utilities are going up. You know, the city is really struggling to maintain its um water and sewer pipes. Uh, and the only way they're gonna maintain the water and sewer pipes is to increase those fees. Uh, they did have a a new fee, uh I'm sure you saw, Commissioner, added to your water bill. Um, remember what it was called, Chris?
Uh, Storm?
No.
Yes.
Storm, we have Stormwater, thank you, Stormwater Management.
I could see.
Yeah, so we pay that also, it's it's gone up. Yeah, they heard a little bit about that at City Hall.
Mine was cheap, it was only a couple of bucks.
Yeah, yeah, it's the camel's nose. But they, again, it's a huge infrastructure in the city. You can't live without water. Um, you can't live without sewer, and uh, you know, it's important. So now we get to, you, we go across and you can see total expenses are here, and it tells you whether we're making money or losing money. And I'll talk a little bit about the uh ones that we are, when it has parentheses around it, it means we're budgeted and and we're expecting to lose money in our budget. Now, I I should have said this at the beginning, we're very conservative in how we put our budget together. So if we think we're gonna get between one million and one point five million dollars in income, we say a million. They don't say one point five, we say a million. Because if we get one point five, wonderful.
Yeah.
We get a million, that's what we were planning on. And the same thing with expenses, if we think it's gonna cost us a million to a million five for something, we say a million five. It costs less, wonderful. It usually does, so it it's it's just a um something to plan on.
Thanks.
You see this pretty little fuchsia? What color would that be, Sue?
That would be fuchsia.
Fuchsia. The magenta. That's what we have um planned to spend in two thousand and twenty three on the Campello project on soft cost. Two millions, four hundred eighty thousand dollars, at five hundred and five dollars. I don't know where the extra five came from, but as I put all the numbers together, it came together, based upon the contract we have. This money here, we will be reimbursed when we close on the deal. That money will come back to the housing authority, but we have to put it out now. And I wanted to point that out, because it is very important. It's a, it's what keeps me up at night. I think I told you that, Mr. Chairman, that number right there. Um, but I I assure you, I have more than myself working on this at um many, many others. And and I do want to uh just uh mention that on Saturday, Commissioner Sullivan talked to Congressman Lynch about this project and um asked if he could support it. And the congressman instructed him to send in a request, which I did yesterday, I believe, or the day before. Um, and so we requested uh the congressman look for um some federal funding for this in an amount of two point five million dollars. Seems like a familiar number. Um, so that that goes there. Um, as we, let me just uh tell a little bit about the programs, and then I'll I'll go into uh where we are in this. Uh, in the federal family housing, our rents were increasing. Uh, we're expecting to go up by about four hundred forty thousand dollars, that's because a lot of people are going back to work. Remember, a lot of our people work in the service industries, and they were just shut out during COVID. So um if they, they're back to work, it's going up. Subsidy is increasing um by about four hundred thousand dollars, expenses are about level, and we have significantly decreased the amount of extraordinary spending we're doing. Trucks, equipment, uh and uh improvements to offices, things like that. We've just basically taken that out. Um, the rents on federal as elderly, uh we have up by three hundred thirty thousand, about six point five percent. Um, does the chairman, does uh Commissioner Roberts know what the increase is going to be for social security? Eight point seven percent. So we we get a portion of that, that's where that's coming from.
We got our little money.
Yeah, exactly. And so we take our little, we take thirty percent of it. I apologize. Um, we are, we do see a significant increase in the um subsidy, about three million dollars. And the reason that's going up so much is everything we're doing with energy. And we we really are doing well there. Maintenance materials, though, is up by forty percent, um by a hundred and seventy thousand, and contract cost up by four hundred thirty-two thousand dollars, twenty-eight percent. Um, section eight program is doing fine, administrative fee has been increased by three hundred eighty-two thousand, fraud recovery has increased by eighty thousand. Um, expenditures are up by two hundred twenty, but that's offset by a two hundred twenty thousand dollar grant we have. Um, we have a budget deficit there of two hundred seventy-five thousand, seven hundred four dollars. Um, but last year, we had projected a seven hundred fourteen thousand dollar deficit. And right now, we're in, we're in subset, we're in excess. So we're, what we're saying to HUD with this budget is we, you want us to do everything in every regulation? You need to give us this money. If you don't, we'll do everything we can, we'll still run the program. Um, but we do want to get that across. Um, section eight mobility, um, we're budgeting a ninety thousand dollars for a trust. This one is very important for the board. Um, I have another magenta thing here.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is the state program. This is Kennedy Drive, Rainbow Terrace, Washburn Heights, Golden Circle. Um, Walnut Turner, North Avenue. They would like us to have a thirty-five percent um thirty-five percent uh reserve level. Um, we're at, probably projecting will be at nineteen, nineteen point seven percent. The reason we are spending more money on this program exclusively is vacancies. To prepare the vacancies, it costs money. Costs a lot of money, because the buildings are so old, think about the ones they told you about, Kennedy Drive, Rainbow Terrace. Walnut Turner aren't that old, but they're huge apartments, I don't know if you've ever seen them, they're beautiful, huge apartments. A golden circle, the same thing. Washburn Heights built back in the early nineteen fifties, and so they cost a lot of money to turn over. We are going to be requesting to the state that they pay for that. Because the option, if this goes to zero, the option is to board up the units. Commissioner Sullivan, you were here when we did that one, huh? Um, we don't want to do that. There's a, there's a housing crisis. The state knows that, I think they'll work with us, and I I may be asking for your support, um although they've been very good in the past when we said this, but it's it's related. Is Vinnie in the room? No, he's not. Uh, Vinnie uh gave me the cost related to his program a couple of days ago, I will share it with Ben Stone, who runs D H C D Public Housing. And uh hopefully we'll get the reimbursement, but it is something that uh every year. And and at times, we've been on a situation where we had to call them to do any extraordinary expenses in this program. And I would call and say, now I'll give you a perfect example, this is real. The, it's February, the heating system has gone out in Walnut Turner, an apartment there, we can't heat it, can I replace the furnace? What's the answer?
Yes.
Of course it can. So, but we have to go through that, and these expenses are are really, and we're bare bones in this program. But that's why we would like to eventually transfer the state program to the feds, because they pay, pay more money.
One question, Tom.
Yes, please.
They wanted, they wanted you to have a thirty percent.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five percent, you only have nineteen.
Right.
What about the rest of it?
You mean between nineteen and thirty-five?
Yeah.
That's what we're going to be requesting them to fund.
Oh, I see.
So they, so they, thirty-five percent. One hundred percent of operating reserves means that you could operate for six months and they send you no money. Fifty percent, you could operate for um two months, what did I say, six months, three months, thirty-five percent, you could operate for two months. If you, so lower you get, it's just, how quickly are you burning through your money?
Yeah.
And how long could you go if they didn't send you any? Um, so they would like you at thirty-five percent of that. They won't, if you go over a hundred, that, you know, that money they gave you to fix things, they stop, they stop sending it.
You can't win.
So, um, but I, it is something the board should be aware of, it's something that we monitor on a regular basis, talk with them on a regular basis. Analyze and and the, the, the majority of the, I'll call the fluctuating costs are vacancies. Because if Vinnie calls me and says, hey, I'm at um uh Kennedy Drive, the cabinets are falling off the wall, which is common. I need to replace the cabinets, that's a significant expense, yes, do it. Um, at times, they're trying not to, they're trying to reattach them, it's a bad management, you should be replacing them, so. Um, but that, that's where, that's where that is, you can see uh this program's at a hundred and eight percent, the other one's a hundred forty-one percent. But by the way, these aren't state programs, so we're all right there. Um, and and the feds don't care, but we have plenty of operating reserves in the feds, we've been saving that for years, and they fund it um to to do it appropriately. Um, so the the overall, it's a, it's, oh, there are no salary increases in this budget. Because we haven't come to terms with our our unions. There was supposed to be a meeting last night, Tom?
Yes, there was canceled because of snow, it was with the maintenance union, and in case if they had to be out plowing or shoveling or doing whatever, they weren't going to be here, parking door up.
So they plowed rain all night?
Yeah.
So put that, um, it's, so we are going through, we we are getting close with that, and I I will, uh, in February, hopefully uh we'll have executive session, and we'll at least talk about where we are, how close we are, what what the items are on there. Um, so uh that's my presentation, I'm going to take this down now, so we can um see everybody, and I'll answer any questions that anybody may have.
Janet, do you still there? Yes.
Yeah.
Any questions by either one, Ernie or Janet?
Uh, no. This uh, my question. Maybe, Tom, how much time did it take you to put all this together?
Well, it's not just me, in fact, I I just review most of the stuff, David and his staff put it all together. Um, you know, gather information throughout the year, um, and then they provide it to Rich Conlon, our accountant. Uh, they go through that and then review it, but uh it's a lot of work to make sure that the numbers are accurate, Ernie. And we're, we're pretty good at what we're doing, and when I say we, I'm pretty good at taking a look and seeing what it is, they're pretty good at putting it together.
Right.
Yeah, I can see it's a lot, a lot of work involved. Everybody did a good job.
Thank you.
Well, it's not your first rodeo, Tom, right?
It is not, you know, it's it's not. Unfortunately, when I look in the mirror, it tells me.
Need a motion of the second on each item?
Yes, that's a motion to approve resolution twenty-three oh one, and then the following four.
Just, we we have nine resolutions to go through.
Okay.
So we need a motion of the second on each one. I'm just going to call them, item eight. It would, it's a resolution twenty-three dash oh one. We need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
I got three, two, three motions to move.
So we got it.
Carol and Ernie.
Okay. I'm, I gotta, a motion has been made by Commissioner Carol Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Ernest Pettiford. Motion is to approve resolution twenty-three zero one, resolution approving fiscal year twenty twenty-three federal operating budget project MA zero two four dash zero zero one dash fourteen dash D asset management project AMP one as presented. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Roll call, Mr. People.
Commissioner Pettiford.
Yes.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes, motion carries unanimously. Item two, resolution twenty-three oh two, need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Janet Craft, seconded by Commissioner Ernest Pettiford. Motion is to approve resolution twenty-three dash oh two, resolution approving fiscal year twenty twenty-three federal operating budget mass zero two four dash zero zero two dash fourteen dash D asset management project AMP two as presented. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Here it is, roll call, Mr. People.
Commissioner Pettiford.
Yes.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. We need a motion and a second on resolution twenty-three dash oh three.
So moved. Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Carol Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Janet Craft. Motion is to approve resolution twenty-three dash oh three. Resolution approving fiscal year twenty-three operating budget, section eight housing choice voucher program as presented. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Here it is, roll call, Mr. People.
Commissioner Pettiford.
Yes.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. We need a motion and a second on program four hundred dash C.
Yeah. So moved. Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Janet Craft, seconded by Commissioner Carol Roberts. Motion that the operating budget for state aided housing for the Brockton Housing Authority Program number four hundred dash C for fiscal year ending twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-three, showing total revenue of one million five hundred and forty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars and total expenses of two million eight hundred fifty-five thousand nine hundred twenty-six dollars. Thereby requesting a subsidy of one million two hundred nine thousand three hundred seventy-six dollars and further that the executive director's total annual salary of a hundred seventy-seven thousand five hundred nine dollars for fiscal year ending December thirty-first twenty twenty-three be submitted to the Department of Housing and Urban uh submitted to the Department of Housing and Community Development for its review and approval. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Here it is, roll call, Mr. People.
Commissioner Pettiford.
Yes.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. We need a motion and a second on program six eight nine dash one.
So moved.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Carol Roberts. Seconded by Commissioner Ernest Pettiford. Motion that the operating budget for state aided housing for the Brockton Housing Authority Program number six eight nine dash one for fiscal year ending twelve thirty-one twenty-three showing total revenue of fifty-one thousand six hundred thirty-seven dollars and total expenses of sixty-two thousand six hundred thirty-seven dollars, thereby requesting a subsidy of zero and further that the executive director's total annual salary of one hundred seventy-seven thousand five hundred nine dollars for fiscal year ending December thirty-first twenty twenty-three be submitted to the Department of Housing and Community Development for its review and approval. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Here it is, roll call, Mr. People.
Commissioner Pettiford.
Yes.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. We need a motion and a second on item, the program number sixty-eight nine dash two.
So moved. Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Janet Craft, seconded by Commissioner Carol Roberts. Motion that the operating budget for state aided housing for the Brockton Housing Authority Program six eighty-nine dash two for fiscal year ending twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-three, showing total revenue of thirty-one thousand one hundred dollars and total expenses of thirty-seven thousand one hundred dollars. Thereby requesting a subsidy of zero and further that the executive director's total annual salary of a hundred seventy-seven thousand five hundred nine dollars for fiscal year ending December thirty-first twenty twenty-three be submitted to the Department of Housing and Community Development for its review and approval. Any discussion or questions on the motion? See, yours still is in here, but a couple of times.
They only pay me once, I want it stopped one time, but yeah, no, this is the Chelsea thing, we have a guy said he made one thing and was paid another, so you gotta make sure everybody knows.
I think they know. A roll call, Mr. People?
Commissioner Pettiford.
Yes, yes.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. We need a motion and a second for Brockton Housing Authority's rental voucher program.
So moved. Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Carol Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Janet Craft. Motion is that the operating budget for state aided housing for the Brockton Housing Authority Massachusetts Rental voucher Program for fiscal year ending twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-three showing total revenue of a hundred seventy-six thousand five hundred dollars and total expenses of two hundred eighteen thousand five hundred fifty-five dollars. Thereby requesting a subsidy of zero and further that the executive director's total annual salary of a hundred seventy-seven thousand five hundred nine dollars for fiscal year ending December thirty-first twenty twenty-three be submitted to the Department of Housing and Community Development for its review and approval. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Here it is, roll call, Mr. People.
Commissioner Pettiford.
Yes, yes.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. We need a motion and a second to approve the operating budget for the central office. From anybody?
From who?
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Ernest Pettiford, seconded by Commissioner Carol Roberts. Motion is to approve the operating budget for the central office cost center for fiscal year ending December thirty-first twenty twenty-three as presented. Any questions or discussion on the motion?
Nope, only, only on the state side.
Roll call, Mr. People.
Uh, Mr. Pettiford. Commissioner. Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes. We need a motion and a second to approve the operating bu- budget for affordable housing.
So moved. Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Janet Craft. Seconded by Commissioner Carol Roberts, motion is to approve the operating budget for the Affordable Housing Program for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first twenty twenty-three as presented. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Here it is, roll call, Mr. People.
Commissioner Pettiford.
Yes.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes. I'd also like to approve that one hundred seventy-seven thousand five hundred nine. Item nine, executive directors report, exhibit F in your packets, Mr. People.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I I want to thank the board, um, you know, the responsibility that you have is great. I just told you, you just approved nine budgets. Uh, there were eleven actually there, two didn't need you to, but that that's seventy million dollars going out into the community being spent uh to help people in the city of Brockton. And so your responsibility is is great, and I appreciate everything you do. Uh, from your, my report, you're going to see that, you know, things are, there's lots of things happening, again, that you oversee. Um, we are, um, uh, we're finally caught up with our vacancies. Uh, so we're back back to normal, uh, COVID really was astronomical, and uh, it's unbelievable how many people that took. Um, I'm hearing recently, though, that there's an uptick again in a number of vacancies, a number of people who are are passing away, especially at the Campello High Rise. Uh, so, you know, it's, it, it comes through. Um, we are, we would like to move Um, we are, we would like to move our annual meeting. We did it in September. Uh, last year, and the reason we did it in September, we were planning on doing it in the spring. And then there was a huge uptick in Covid again, and so we pushed it off. But I, I would like to bring it back to, um, the regular time in, in June. And it's been our tradition, uh, to do a couple of things. The board has, um, uh, chosen a person of the year. The board has chosen a resident of the year. Um, and then there's been involved in the menu choices that we have for the, the meeting. Um, so I'd like to, you know, whether there's, the board like to do as whole or subcommittees or however you'd like to do it, but I. I have put together some names for, uh, consideration. Um, for, for both, um, positions and so, and whatever the board would like to do on that.
What, wasn't it normally Janet and Carol? Did, did both, all, all three things they did? Is that still okay with you, Janet?
Sure. Yeah.
Carol?
So you know, because we'll, we'll, we'll make it a lunch meeting.
Wow. Yeah.
Someplace we can sit down and, but it is a, we'll put the things together. Um, and that'd be good. I'm excited to get back again. I, I, I thought it was nice that we had people together last year for us. I thought it was nice that the NAACP, um, that, uh, we were together. By the way, I, I just, that Bob Jones was amazing. You want to. Jones. He was amazing. I, I.
He's a, he's a hoop for ninety-one.
Uh, for ninety-one, and I didn't think he was gonna make it. I didn't think he was gonna say a thing. I thought he was gonna fall down. And then he did twenty minutes of comedy. And the thing that reminded me is he said, Governor, what did he say about Governor Baker being in charge of the NAACP? Yeah, he wanted to congratulate.
NCAA.
Yeah, it was, oh yeah, that was the end. But he was hilarious. He was just, what a, what a man. And then the, his history. Martin Luther King he met, Malcolm X, X he met, Jackie Robinson. Who was the fourth person? Do you remember?
Jackie Robinson.
Uh, it just, it was amazing.
Ted Kennedy?
Yeah, well, Ted Kennedy, but he was down here. He came in, but it was, I just, I'm sorry, went off on that. Um.
I just wanted, you wanted to go back to the teen challenge?
Oh, yes, yeah.
I see that here. I, I'm sure nobody has any problems with that. But there's really no other place.
Yeah, I, I like teen challenge in another way too. It's a common mission.
Yeah.
Teen challenge is there to help people. Right? And they do a fabulous job. So it's, uh, I, I, I do see the mission sort of, and I'm always impressed. You know, everybody who serves you. Everybody who takes care of you has a substance abuse issue.
Yeah.
And they really, they're just impressive. I just, uh, uh, I'm, I'm really.
I haven't heard any complaints on the food or anything.
No. Well, wait until you see the menu. Susan, how long's the menu?
Ten pages.
Yeah.
Wow.
Oh yeah, it goes on and on and on.
Purple potatoes again?
Yeah.
Purple potatoes. The only thing people complain about is the parking. Uh, but I think they, they handle it well. I think they're very accommodating and, and as long as they use Trinity Baptist Church. Um, I think it's, I think it works out fine. It's, it's bad only if it's a snowstorm or a rainstorm, but I don't think in June we'll be having snow, so.
We hope not.
Um, a couple more things I'd like to mention. Uh, moving to work, Collaborative, they're having a training in Washington on April twelfth and thirteenth. Uh, that, uh, Mr. Clough, um, and Mr. Williams and I will be attending. Uh, it's, um, there's a lot to this program and how we're going to be able to use it to benefit the residents and the authority. Um. I did give you a, an executive summary in your packet of the, um, feasibility study.
Yeah.
If you've noticed, this is the feasibility study right here. You have the first four or five pages. Um, but it's comprehensive. And there's so many things in here that we were thinking about that can't be done because it's not feasible, mostly because of. The fact that you were built too close to the other tower and you don't want to be shaking that tower all around. You're too close to water. It, uh, it costs too much money. In fact, in your executive summary on the last page. It shows you that the, uh, we. Options, there were, uh, four options, option one, two, three, and three point one. Option one was two hundred thirty-three million dollars. Option two was two twenty-six, option three, two twenty-two. And then we came up with three point one and we've got it down to a hundred and seventy-six million dollars. So not much. Um, with all the other soft loss and everything, we're looking somewhere around two hundred and five million dollars. But, but you do have the executive, uh, the executive summary of that. There's a tremendous amount of work. We're now in feasibility. We're expecting the feasibility. Uh, design, I'm sorry, design, schematic design. We're expecting that to be done by the end of, uh, March. Uh, and so, I, I think I said this to the residents at our last meeting. And I think that I'm, I'm repeating what Chris has said to them. We've gone over and over the design and we were a bit frustrated and Chris said, look. Figure out where you can do the truck with the rubbish and build your buildings around there. Because we didn't like where the buildings were coming from there. But you make decisions on what type of heating systems you could use, centralized power plants. Within, you know, there's all sorts of decisions that you're making there, and then we'll go on to construction. Um, design, you know, documents, so it's a welcome bid. Um.
One question.
Yes, please.
I need three buildings. That's gonna be the sample, I read, both three.
So the three, this is very, very, very rough. Yes, we're looking at three buildings that will be six stories high. Yeah, so very rough. It's just, um, if you might look, because it, it's actually six, I think, one, two, three, no, it's five, right?
It's five.
There's five. So that, that's just a sort of giving an idea what.
But when I was driving, is there gonna be an apartment for the, the people that are there now?
Right, so there's three hundred ninety-eight apartments. One of the, um, givens is there will be three hundred ninety-eight apartments. In the new places. They will be bigger. They'll be, um, about. Um, thirty-three percent bigger than the apartments that they're in right now. There'll be a significant increase in size per apartment.
They would like that.
Yes. Yes, it will.
And, and it, it, does it hold more residents?
It does not, Janet. It's three hundred ninety-eight. We have tried to see where we could put additional units. Uh, we do have, uh, uh, one little sketch where we have fourteen, um, duplexes over by the inventory center running along the road that comes in. The B building, but when we went through feasibility, that got knocked out because of cost and being too close to the water. That the flood. So, uh, but this will generate ability for us to do more. Uh, but I won't get into that now because it's a, it's a separate program altogether. Um.
Can we have gardens on the roofs?
There may be. We, that's, uh, something we haven't got, uh, into yet. We are looking at a, um, a rooftop patio. Um, above the, uh, community room.
Yeah. Maybe we can have a rooftop res- restaurant. Nah.
No comment. Would love that. Would love to, or not.
Yeah, so I'm just mentioning, we are going to have, we're going to turn the, um, area near the river into a river po- a river walk.
Nice.
So there'll be a very nice place where you can walk around. So we're taking what now is a detriment to the, uh, development and turning it into a positive.
And everybody's gonna put in for transfers.
Yeah, yeah, yep. Well, you know what? Campello will go from one of the places that people want to move away from. To a place that people want to move to.
Right.
And then that, that'll be nice and hopefully we'll do that with every one of our developments.
Yep.
But that, that's my report.
And here they're called Campello Apartments. Do we plan to continue with that name?
That will be something that I won't decide, but you may. Um, yes, we, we will be thinking about what we call it. It could be three different places. It's thirteen eighty Main Street now. Is it gonna be thirteen eighty Main Street or should we have, which is always a problem, by the way. Ask the people to be building.
Yeah.
Um, you know, should it be thirteen? Sixty-five Main, sixty-six Main Street, thirteen eighty Main Street, and then something out on Plain Street? I don't know. That's something we're gonna have to go through. The naming of the complex, the naming of the buildings, all that is up, um, who is it? Keep saying we sell it. Have you, have you, Tom?
I did sell it, yeah. Sell the naming rights.
Sell the naming rights.
We need the money.
Um, but that, so we don't know.
We're missing, we're missing that, Tom.
We're missing what?
What Tom said.
He said sell the naming rights.
Like the Shaw Center.
That, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. But.
The Bullis Gardens. We'll get market basket.
But that is something that the board should be thinking about because it will be, um, something, right? It's, it's the Campello High Rise right now. Well, it won't be High Rise. Could be Campello Apartments. That's what we're calling it, just for, you know, a placeholder. Could be that. Could be the residents at Campello. Could be the residents on Salisbury Plain. You know, that would.
Camp, Campello River Apartments.
Oh, true. Oh, the bar, yeah.
What's that?
Campello River Apartments. Makes it sound a little fancier.
Yep, so again, that, that's all, um, that will not be decided by me. That will be a, uh, something that comes and you guys will dedicate it.
Would you try to sell it, Tom? The name of it?
I don't know if we can, Tim. It was more.
It's a nice idea.
But it's not a bad idea.
I, it was just done in, uh, Peedy Garden. They did it for like twenty years or something.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, the Shaw Center.
Yeah. So. Maybe it is. Did you look into it? He says yes.
Well, you have to, you have to, it could be the Green Leaf Dispensary Gardens.
You get a lot of people. Oh, that's excellent. How, how would you sell a name?
PMB.
You, you issue a, by request for proposals, you advertise it, you push it into the places where people would see it. Again, you'd have to be very careful about what you could and couldn't do. Um, that's what Bat Bus does it, right? That sells their signs on the side of their bus. It's really no different.
Yeah.
Um, so. It's a, you do a marketing campaign.
Yeah.
The highest bidder would get the, get the name.
Yeah.
You could do it for five years, ten years.
Yeah, yeah.
Twenty.
Yeah. But we've never done that before, right?
We have not, no.
We're just gonna look into it, see if we can.
Yeah. It's always been named after some person who. Was, um, beloved by. By the community that lives there, it seems.
Yeah. Well, you have Sullivan Towers, Mayor Sullivan. Um, Manning Tower, Clayton Manning, who was the chairman of this board at one time. He might be right up behind you.
Cafrey.
Cafrey.
Cafrey Towers was the chairman of the board at that time, yeah. Ca- uh, Marilyn Cafrey. Bel Air, they did not. Apparently they were, they were fighting over that, I heard, and so they came up with no one. I'm gonna call it anything.
We need a motion and a second, item nine. From anybody?
So moved.
I admit.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Carol Roberts. Seconded by Commissioner Ernest Pedefit. Motion to accept the executive director's report for January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three and put on file. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Here we go. Roll call, Mr. Keel.
Commissioner Pedefit.
Yes.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries unanimous. Item ten. Award of Contract. ADA Client Doors and Operators. Manning Tower, Project twenty-four dash three. Cafrey Tower, Project twenty-four dash seven. And Sullivan Tower, Project twenty-four dash eight. Exhibit G in the package.
Uh, before I ask Mr. Barry to speak on this, I just want to recognize him and his staff for all the work they're doing. Uh, it's overwhelming. It's, it's every day. Uh, he went through, uh, Covid and, uh, then Mr. Beat, and that took a lot more work to get stuff done. Um, I can tell you the work, getting it done is a little more frustrating, so I'm just, it's amazing at, uh, the amount of stuff coming out of his office. We are looking for ways to expand it, to be quite honest with you.
So maybe it should be the Chris Barry Building, huh?
The Chris Barry Building.
No, thank you.
See you. We can see him now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, well, please, Mr. Barry, yes.
Back, uh, back on, uh, November thirtieth, capital improvements, so let's source it in bids from general contractors for the twenty-four-three. Manning Tower, twenty-four-seven Cafrey Tower, and twenty-four-eight Sullivan Tower ADA Door and Operator Project. And on December twenty-second, a public online bid was opened. Uh, was held and three bids received, ranging from one hundred twenty to one hundred fifty-eight thousand five hundred. After the, um, the bid opened, a capital improvement in the authorities architect evaluated the bid for its, uh. Received for completeness. Additionally, check, reference checks were conducted to the current low. S Barzola Construction Company of third, eleven eighty-three Main Street, South Lehman. Were deemed irresponsible, responsive and responsible with a low bid amount of one hundred twenty thousand dollars. Would recommend award to contract to S Barzola. Construction Corp. of eleven eighty-three Main Street, South Lehman. Uh, contract for the ADA Doors and Operators at Manning, twenty-three Manning Towers. Twenty-four-seven Cafrey Towers and twenty-four-eight Sullivan Towers Project, came out of one hundred twenty-eight, one hundred twenty thousand dollars even.
We need a motion and a second, item ten.
So moved. Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Carol Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Janet Trask. Motion for water contract in the amount of a hundred twenty thousand dollars. The S Barzola Construction Corporation of South Lehman of Mass. For the ADA Doors and Operators at Manning Towers, Project twenty-four dash three, Cafrey Towers, Project twenty-four dash seven. And Sullivan Tower, Project twenty-four dash eight. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Here we go. Roll call, Mr. Keel.
Commissioner Pedefit.
Yes.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carried, yes. One question, Chris. Set the. Like that button there.
Yeah, yes. There are lots of them actually in here, um, in this development, um, which are our main office. There's a lot that we don't have even going into our office itself. Um, downstairs going out. Um, the community, the community center, they have a lot of problems there with them. Uh, we have our Sullivan Tower. We have one going out to the back garden. Uh, and Cafrey Towers, we have two doors going out through a back entrance from the back park. For those of the operators, um, all the door work is here, like again downstairs doors. It's just broken every other week and this one here is always kind of problems as well.
It will make the residents happy.
Yeah.
Every week, you know, talking about these doors.
Yeah.
You know what I'm talking about, Carol.
Yeah.
It's a wrap, me.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I just want to say to Chris before you start, um, on the waterproofing that was done. Thank you, because all that rain we had, there was no water coming out of the house. Dry as a bone.
You sure?
I'm positive. I walk.
It was an easy job, right, Chris?
Yeah. Yeah, but thank you. Great job.
Item eleven. Approval of change order number one, furnace replacement project, Hillside Village. Project twenty-four dash one, exhibit eight in the package.
If I could ask Mr. Barrett to speak on this, please.
Thank you. Um, back on June, uh, due first, a drawn specification of capital improvements used to solicit, um. Uh, bid from private, uh, private contractors. At twenty-four dash one, Hillside Village. Furnace replacement. Did not include two of the buildings, building number twelve and number thirteen. Unfortunately, the drawings that we provided the architect. Were from a comprehensive modernization at Hillside Village. Which had removed buildings called the thirteen from the site plan. Due to a relocation of buildings during that project. The change order is for a plumbing and HVAC work. Um, for the removal and replacement of ten furnaces. These costs are in line with the original, um, bid award. We are still in negotiation on the low voltage and line voltage electrical work. Um, from the filed sub bidder. Um, we would recommend a change order to, um, accept this change order. In the amount of a hundred and three thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars and twenty-six cents from Arugio Brothers Incorporated. Of P O Box fifty-two fifty-two twenty-five, prevent the mass at the Hillside Village furnace replacement project.
One question, Chris, a hundred and three. One question, Chris, a hundred and three thousand, not for ten?
That's for ten, ten furnaces, yeah.
No, two dollars there.
That's, yeah, so one of them has six units and the other one has four units. Uh, and that's replacing all ten of those, and those, those buildings, yeah. This again was from his numbers, we bid, we did a breakdown on his numbers for his original bid, and that's the same numbers. That's why we're, we're not getting the same information from the electrician, so we're rejecting his numbers at this time.
Okay, okay.
So isn't that one of the biggest amounts for a change order we've seen?
Um, no.
No?
No, it is a high, it's, so that, um, it's rate about nine percent, I believe, uh, with the same one, uh. There's a, yeah, a percentage. His total contract was one point two four one, his original contract, I should say. So it's a little less than the ten, it's less than ten percent.
Yeah, but we have, so there's a hundred units there. We had contracted for ninety of them, we're adding ten. So it's ten percent, it's, it's not as though they're saying we're gonna give you the same work and as unforeseen, but they're gonna give us more of what we, we bought per unit.
Yeah.
So we have, we have to do it, correct?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Well, you don't have to, you just tell those ten people to take hold.
There's a sweater.
Fire please. No. Just one other question, Chris.
Yeah.
Was there a mistake done in nineteen ninety-three?
Back in, uh, when they did this over, they did the development over. That was when they were gonna be tearing down the building. And it became a big problem, and what they, instead of tearing them down, they moved the building. It used to be up in the middle of development, and they moved it out in the back. Problem was the drawing, when I gave them the drawing, it had them eliminated. And they only had the, um, so the, um, they were missing those two buildings.
Oh, I see.
Okay, so when they did their takeoff, and everyone bid out on it, it just, one of those wasn't there.
Yeah, okay. And I do want to say economically, uh, uh, most of this project is being paid all, all across the city um, by money savings from our energy service contract. Um, so there, there is, there was a lot of money that came into the authority that we didn't have because we're doing this program.
We need a motion in a second, item eleven.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Ernest Pettiford, seconded by Commissioner Janet Trask. Motion is to approve change order number one in the amount of a hundred three thousand three hundred fifty-five dollars and twenty-six cents to the contracts with Arugio Brothers Plumbing Incorporated of New Benton Mass for the furnace replacement project, Hillside Village, project twenty-four dash one. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, Mr. People.
Commissioner Pettiford.
Yes.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries unanimous. Item twelve. Award of contract surveillance system upgrade, Hillside Village, project twenty-four dash one, and Roosevelt Heights, project twenty-four dash nine. Exhibit I in the package.
This is an item that we put into your packet, but the bid had not been done yet, Mr. Barry has the results of the new bid. And I apologize to Commissioner Trask and Commissioner Pettiford, because I can't hand these through the, the television to you here. Um, but we tend to write exactly what they say. And our different.
I've got one, thank you.
You have one, okay. Um, in fact, if you could just make sure you read it.
Yeah, I will.
Uh, so that you can hear exactly what I have, exactly what I have in my hand.
Thank you, Mr. People. Uh, on January fourth, two thousand twenty-three, capital improvements solicited bids from prime contractors for the surveillance system upgrade at twenty-four dash one Hillside Village and twenty-four dash nine Roosevelt Heights Project. Then on January twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two, a public bid opening was held with one bid being received in the amount of one million five hundred ninety-three thousand one hundred forty-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents. After the bid opened in capital improvements and the authorities, architect evaluating the bid for completeness. Additionally, received reference six and conducted it, the current low bidder, uh, American Alarm and Communications of two ninety-seven Broadway Arlington Mass and were deemed responsive and responsible, low bid, in the amount of one million five hundred ninety-three thousand one hundred forty-seven and sixty-seven cents. We would recommend to award American Alarm and Communications of two ninety-seven Broadway Arlington Mass a contract for the surveillance system upgrade at twenty-four dash one Hillside Village and twenty-four dash nine Roosevelt Heights Project in the amount of one million five hundred ninety-three thousand one hundred forty-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Just one question, when you say surveill- are you talking about the cannon?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what they're.
Yes. We, we at, at Hillside Village and Roosevelt Heights are our biggest developments that have not had any vast, um, camera projects done to them. What this is gonna be doing is basically complete these connections, all the buildings in both sites. One, the twelve acre site, and one, the ten acre site. So it's gonna be digging and trenching and, and necking by height to all the buildings to put cameras systems in or on or through them. Alone.
I remember. I think it was Kevin Herman, edit, surveillance on his phone.
Yes.
That, that could be part of it.
Yes, it, yes.
Anybody can see it on their phone?
Not anyone.
Not there.
Authorized people can. But the other thing is, we're also in connection with the, we're able to connect with the property, I mean, police and fire for our systems as well.
So I, I wanted to make sure that the, the reason that's so important, we want our residents knowing, right now you're on camera. There's a camera right there watching us, nobody's watching it. If something, if an event happened here, we would say Thursday the twenty-sixth at two thirty or three o'clock, there was an event. Let's go look at what happened. So, yes, you're always on camera, when we're done with this, just about every place in the housing authority, you'll be able to see on camera. But we don't want to be watching our residents, that's not, we don't want to be watching our employees, that's not healthy. We, yeah, we, we only go there when it needs to be, uh, reviewed. Um, we also, the, the asset managers will open it up at least once a week, make sure that it's operating. So won't, uh, uh, negotiate, they'll be doing the same thing. Um, but it is important, we also have, uh, uh, technology that will notify us that a camera is not working. So that, that's one of the biggest problems, you know, you think you have the camera when you go to get the tape. It's not working.
We need a motion in a second, item call.
So moved.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Cal Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Ernest Pettiford. Motion is to award American Alarm Communications of two ninety-seven Broadway Arlington Mass a contract for the surveillance system upgrade at twenty-four dash one Hillside Village and twenty-four dash nine Roosevelt Heights Project in the amount of one million five hundred ninety-three thousand one hundred forty-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents, which I might add as a low bid. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, Mr. People.
Commissioner Pettiford.
Yes.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries unanimous, thank you. Item thirteen, approval of change order number one, group replacement, Bel Air Towers, project twenty-four dash ten, exhibit J in the package.
If I could ask Mr. Barry to speak on this also, please.
Uh, again, during the, uh, bidding pro- with the bidding process and the, uh, plan specification, it was designed that uh, Bel Air high-rise roof had, uh, lightweight tapering, um, leveler on the roof itself, and it called for it to be replaced. But at the beginning, and once they signed the strip back, it was determined in a way that most of the lightweight uh, concrete had been removed from previous roof stuff. So, what they did is they took and throughout the whole process, they evaluated what percentage and what was needed there, what had to come up, what was up. Back and forth with the, uh, uh, architect on this, they carried in their bid sixty-four thousand dollars to do the removal of this lightweight concrete. The, the actual amount that they spent to remove what was there was twenty-three thousand seven hundred dollars. Therefore, is a credit of forty thousand three hundred coming back to the authority. They're also requesting a no-cost time extension for sixty-three days due to the supply chain issues for the delivery of the, uh, material. We would recommend to accept change order number one in the amount of a negative forty thousand three hundred in a no-cost time extension of sixty-three calendar days from, from Leadon Way Construction Company Incorporated of thirty-one Perkins Street, Rockham Mass for the roof replacement at twenty-four dash ten Bel Air, that right?
We need a motion in a second, item thirteen.
So moved. Second.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Janet Trask, seconded by Commissioner Cal Roberts. Motion is to approve change order number one in the credit amount of minus forty thousand three hundred dollars in a no-cost fifty-three calendar day time extension to the contract with Leadon Way Construction Company Incorporated of Rockham Mass for the roof replacement project at Bel Air Tower, project twenty-four dash ten. This is money coming back to us, Jim.
Yeah.
Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, Mr. People.
Commissioner Pettiford.
Yes.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries unanimous. Item fourteen. Approval or certificate of completion consolidated in specific, certificate of release, roof replacement, Bel Air Towers project twenty-four dash ten, exhibit K in the package. Mr. People.
Uh, Mr. Barry, if I could ask you to speak on this.
Thank you, Mr. People, again, uh, capital improvements has deemed Leadon Way Construction Company Incorporated of thirty-one Perkins Street, Rockham Mass complete as of December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two for the twenty-four dash ten Bel Air high-rise roof replacement project, as per the specification. Capital improvements has also confirmed that the construction work meets all specifications posed in the Leadon Way Construction Company Incorporated has completed all punctual items. We would recommend to approve the certificate of completion consolidated and a certificate of release for Leadon Way Construction Company Incorporated of thirty-one Perkins Street for the twenty-four dash ten Bel Air high-rise roof replacement.
Need a motion in a second, item fourteen.
So moved.
Second.
Who, who made that motion?
Carol. Carol did.
In the second.
Ernie.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Cal Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Ernest Pettiford. Motion is to approve the certificate of completion consolidated and the certificate of release to the contract of Leadon Way Construction Company of Rockham Mass for the roof replacement project at Bel Air Tower, project twenty-four dash ten, effective December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call, Mr. People.
Commissioner Pettiford.
Yes.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Have we worked with this, this, um, company before?
Leadon Way?
Yeah.
Now, this was their first one, they're actually have they awarded another roof project at Sullivan Tower, which will be closing out next month.
Well, that's good, I mean, I love to see Brockton companies, it's, it's very good.
Yes.
And I would say we've been very happy with them.
Yeah.
That they've moved right along, been very responsive.
They work in all these, they, whether, they're very solid, they not work, and they're, and there's, I think, six or seven brothers that own it, and I think the youngest one sixty-something, and they're out there every single day. And all of it, it's crazy.
Excellent. Just quick, where is Perkins Street?
That?
It's, it's over between Crescent and what's that other street?
Crescent Lodge.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's over near the Teen Challenge.
No, no, no.
Not Teen Challenge, the, um, what's the?
Why? There's a wa- there's a Y that's near the, that has a program.
Nope.
Yeah.
Nope, it's, it's between, it goes between, uh, remember those Staney's Ice Cream?
Yeah.
There's a post, that's Perkins, right in the corner there, the old, um.
LeBaron's Foundry?
It goes right down to LeBaron's, yeah, when it turns into Curve Street at LeBaron's.
Yeah, yeah.
I was just wondering where the thirty-one is, I've never seen the roofie company yet.
Yeah, there, again, that's the, you can, they're there.
It's just a little street.
There is, if you go behind that building that faces, uh, uh, Crescent Street, the one that used to have the Hispanic, uh, Delo Rodriguez.
Crescent Auto used to be back there.
Crescent Auto, they were there, yeah.
Yeah.
There is some.
There was a, uh, locksmith there, it was at Mandarow.
Yeah, that was it.
And the, the family center used to be on that street too, then they moved to, um, Campello.
I guess it, there's a driveway from there, and it goes out back, you don't see it, I guess, from the front, but it, it's out behind everything, so. I, I kept saying the same thing, I drove down there to see it, but. So.
Did we do the roll call on this already?
Yes. Correct, too.
I think so.
Yes.
Yep. Yes.
Item fifteen. Approval of change order number one, surveillance system upgrade, Manning Tower, project twenty-four dash three, Crescent Court, project twenty-four dash four, exhibit ten in the package.
If I could ask Mr. Barry to speak on this, please.
Towards the end of our surveillance, surveillance system installation at Manning Towers, it was determined that the southeast corners for the building would not be covered sufficiently, therefore, capital improvements requested a change order proposal from American Alarm Communications to install additional cameras. Capital improvements and the architect reviewed the change order proposal number one, in the amount of three thousand ninety-four dollars and twenty-seven cents, and find it to be fair and in line with the pricing of the project. We would recommend to accept change order number one in the amount of three thousand ninety-four dollars, twenty-seven cents from American Tower, uh, American, sorry, American Alarm and Communications of two ninety-seven Broadway Arlington Mass for the twenty-four dash three Manning Tower and twenty-four dash four Crescent Court surveillance system, uh, upgrade.
Just one question.
Yep.
Costs three thousand dollars a camera?
Oh, the corner camera, which has a complete spread around, and that's not, that's a camera insulation of the wire and from that corner, uh, and, and down into below here, so.
The cameras are fairly inexpensive, that, that's not the most expensive part about it, it's the labor putting it in. And then when these go, they go to, what are they called? They're computers, but.
Yeah, there's any, uh. Hydrate, there's hydrive down there, but it's another.
That, that's the most expensive part of the, the equipment per se, it's a computer, all feeds to a computer that's downstairs off the residence room here.
Okay.
Um.
You have a server down there.
Server, exactly, thank you.
We need a motion in a second, item fifteen.
So moved.
Second, Ernie. Got you, Janet.
Ernie, did you second that one?
He first did it.
Oh, the other way around, okay. A motion has been made by Commissioner Ernest Pettiford, seconded by Commissioner Cal Roberts. Motion to approve change order number one in the amount of three thousand ninety-four dollars and twenty-seven cents to the contract with American Alarm and Communications of Arlington Mass for the surveillance system upgrade at Manning Tower, project twenty-four dash three, and Crescent Court, project twenty-four dash four. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing them, roll call, Mr. People.
Commissioner Pettiford.
Yes.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries unanimous, thank you. Item fif- item sixteen. Approval of. Approval of com, certificate of completion consolidated in certificate of release, surveillance systems upgrade, Manning Tower Project twenty-four dash three. And Crescent Court Project twenty-four dash four, exhibit M in the packet. Mr. Cable?
If I could ask Mr. Barry to speak on this?
Capital, uh, capital improvements have deemed, uh, American alarm and communication of two ninety-seven Broadway, Arlington, Mass. Complete as of December eighth, two thousand twenty-two. For the twenty-four dash three Manning Tower and the twenty-four dash four Crescent Court Surveillance System Upgrade, for the plan specification. Capital improvements has also confirmed that the structure work meets all applicable codes. And that American alarm communication has completed the full functional items. We would recommend to approve the certificate of completion consolidated in the certificate of relief from, from American alarms in communication of two ninety-seven Broadway, Arlington, Mass. For the twenty-four dash three Manning Tower and the twenty-four dash four Crescent Court Surveillance System Upgrade Project.
We need a motion and a second, item sixteen.
So moved.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Janet Trask, seconded by Commissioner Ernest Pettiford. Motion is to approve the certificate of completion consolidated in the certificate of release to the contract with American alarm and communications of Arlington, Mass. For the surveillance system upgrade at Manning Tower. Project twenty-four dash three, and Crescent Court Project twenty-four dash four, effective December eighth, two thousand twenty-two. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Harry Nunk, roll call, Mr. Cable?
Commissioner Pettiford?
Yes.
Commissioner Trask?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Motion carries. Unanimate.
Thank you.
You have a lot of this stuff.
I know.
Give the man some water.
Item seventeen, old business. Any old business? Harry Nunk? Item eighteen, new business. Any new business?
Is, is our ARBA money all gone?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Is our ARBA money all gone?
ARBA money, American Rescue, um, program, uh, money, no. We, in fact, that's the type of money we were asking Congressman Lynch for. Um, which is, our program qualifies for that, so apparently there is some, um, uh, apparently, Mr. Chairman, I don't know what he said to you about, he said we're a little late, but.
Yeah, I, I, just so you know, Janet and, uh, Ernie. When I talked to David Lynch, he's expressed to me that this should have been done like six months ago. He, he says it's late. But I can still squeeze it in, if you, you have to give a letter to next, which has already been done. And, oh, see if the money comes in. But. And he waited for you, that he can't just give us the money, we have to request it, and then he'll give it to him.
So were we slow in the uptake?
Well, we had been asking the city for the ARBA money, because the ARBA money we were aware of, um, came through the state, went to the county, and then to the city. The city had, uh, spent all those, that money, I was unaware that this money was available until he said it to, um, the, uh, Commissioner Sullivan. We are also going to be asking our legislative delegation to work with gov, the governor, the governor recently, uh, submitted a bill for a, a number of economic development items, which, uh, included a lot of housing money. And we will be requesting that a, uh, set aside, we put, um, here for Brockton.
Well, thank you, Tim, for talking to him on Saturday. If, if I had known, I would have helped you.
I didn't know we had something to take.
Not that I have more clout, obviously, but still.
Any other items under new business? Harry Nunk? Need a motion, item nineteen. Don't leave yet, we gotta do a roll call. Item nineteen, motion, ten seconds, for anybody?
Oh, so moved.
Second?
A motion has been made by Commissioner Carol Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Janet Trask, motion is withdrawn, roll call, Mr. Cable?
Commissioner Pettiford?
Yes.
Commissioner Trask?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes, meeting and drawing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. Stay well.
See you, see you guys.